It's hands.
One page and another guide.
The legislative order with the duty of justice for all.
All right, we have a consent agenda. Uh, starting with the approval of the January sixteenth minutes of the COVID Q P D. Approve the high end C A cap session of our two regulations. C, we approve. First approval to sponsor a grant for the violence note wears. D, approve a grant agreement for the Grand Park Regional Execution Center. P, write the movement of the public health doc agreement. F, payment of property tax abatement sixty-two point eleven point thirty-three point oh two H P eight-six. G, establish an absentee ballot board for the twenty twenty-four Minnesota nomination primary. H, approve data sharing data powers agreement with Minnesota Department of Health. I approve a resolution supporting most energy. And J, approve the governor agreement with the city of Rochester, the town of Rome, one point seven, eighteen Avenue Southwest. K, approve the twenty twenty-four crest purchase service agreements. And I accept the blue county twenty twenty-three adopt the family program donations.
Move to approve?
I'd like to amend that motion to, to uh pull D off for further discussion.
We have a motion to approve, uh, to pull D, the uh grant agreement for Grand Park Regional Execution Center off the agenda. Then we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A close sign sign. Now, uh, Representative, uh Commissioner Padolkey, reduce her motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sign. And we welcome our friends from Workforce Development Inc. to uh an overview and an update. Welcome.
All right, good morning. That went a little faster than I was expecting, but we're ready, so. Thanks for having us here today. It's always a pleasure to be able to present to you all and share a little bit about what we're doing at Workforce Development Inc. Um, so I was asked to provide an update on what we did with our OKRA project. And I thought we'd take the opportunity to also give you an update on our M F I B and D W P services. So you'll hear from me first and then you'll hear from my colleague Kyle as we get moving here. Um, first, first of all, my name is Ginny Rittman. I'm the Executive Director with Workforce Development Inc. Um, our private nonprofit organization serving the ten county area in Southeast Minnesota, providing employment and training services. And next slide, our mission is here for you. Our mission is to develop and advance the workforce of Southeast Minnesota. And we do that through these things, um, being a champion for workers, a convening agent, a change agent, and an accountability agent. Uh, for the workers and employers in Southeast Minnesota. All right, next slide. So a little bit of an update or overview of what we did with our OKRA project. As you can see, we served ninety-one Homestead County residents. And that was a two-year project from January first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. All of the individuals that participated in the project received those four services, development of an employment plan, career assessments, resume development, and job search assistance. Um, sixty-four participated in uh training opportunities, and so you'll hear a little bit more about that in a little bit. Um, and then thirty-nine have exited with successful employment. The others that are not included in that number are still enrolled in our programming and are still participating either in training or services. And so we'll have kind of a better update on, you know, the final, final numbers after all those folks complete their training programs. Next slide, thanks. Um, so a little demographic information. Just by age, we served a lot of, you know, uh, ages thirty to thirty-nine was our largest um population that we served. So we served kind of all ages, not just those that are just graduating from high school, which was kind of some of our original data that we were serving. Um, but we really were able to expand this to a lot of different age groups and also demographics. Um, by race ethnicity, as you can see on the next slide. So here we served forty-eight white, twenty-seven black or African American, twenty-two, I don't need to read all this to you. But we served a very diverse population through this project, which we're very proud of. Um, and if you look at our outcomes, you can look at our outcomes by all these different demographic data points as well. And um, we had great success with, you know, kind of across the board, um, based on demographics. All right, next slide. A few additional demographics there for you. Uh, served, you know, a few with disabilities, uh, served twelve individuals that their country of origin was outside the U S. And then about half mixed female and male. All right.
The country of origin, uh, is that, does that indicate a recent arrival or, you know, I could have been here. Country of origin, it could have been here twenty years. What is that?
No, there, no, it does not delineate between the dates. Um, we just kind of keep track of, you know, that one data point, I guess, so. And then where too. And the list, I think, if you look at the um countries listed, I think it was twelve different countries too, so it's just kind of interesting data point. All right, so our career services, this is just an overview of what we all do with our career services. Uh, we have career navigators that work with individuals and help them kind of look at their interests, look at their skills, and then connect them with the training options that fit their plan best, um, and their needs and interests. They help them with finding and applying for and obtaining training, and then obviously finding employment opportunities. We have a very, um, very diverse, um, network of employers that we work with. We have a board of directors that's, you know, private business focused. And so we have a lot of different opportunities that we can connect folks with once they are finished with their training. All right, next slide. So this is a list of some of the public sector training that we provided, um, to the folks that were in the project, so. Um, just to kind of go back a little bit, the training opportunities that we focused on with these, with these funds were, um, both public sector and then construction and trades. And so this is the list of the public sector training opportunities that we provided through the OKRA project. And then on the next slide, there's some success or some exit details for you. So our average wage upon employment was twenty-three dollars per hour. I will say, um, the construction and trades, um, employment, uh, exits were, were a bit higher than the public sector. Um, and so that brought us down a little bit. If you look at the trades, you know, construction and trades average per hour, it was somewhere around twenty-seven. And so the two together combined then gave us an average wage of twenty-three. Seven exited, having completed all the objectives and obtaining employment. Thirty-two exited, um, obtaining employment. And again, a lot of the others are still in the programming and still in training. All right, next slide. So this is a list of the various, um, uh, positions that people were hired for once they completed the training program. And this isn't a comprehensive list, it's just kind of a spattering, I guess, of all the different things that people were hired for. We had quite a few that were hired into, um, production, into C D L, into, um, construction-based jobs. And then also, um, the care, you know, kind of the, uh, uh, care assistant kind of employment opportunities. I'm going kind of fast, so I'll pause. All right, so a few challenges and strategies, you know, we, just like everybody else, we find, we find it difficult to find people, right? We just have, um, such a low unemployment rate and, and uh, it's hard to get people involved in some of the programming. We need to do more outreach. It's one of our, it is our main priority at Workforce Development is to do more outreach in the community. Um, spend more money on outreach, spend more money on marketing, all of those kinds of things. And so just like every other employer, we're finding it difficult to find people. Um, but having said that, you know, I do think that we strategize to be able to kind of change our services, to provide support services, to make sure that we're really making those connections. So that when people do find out about our programs, they get connected quickly and they get the services that they need. Um, awareness obviously goes along hand in hand with that, making sure that people even know about our programming. And, um, making sure that there's kind of a seamless referral between us and the county staff, between us and other nonprofit organizations that serve folks. And just kind of making that a little bit more seamless. And then co-enrollment is something that we're really big on, and it's not only a necessity, but it really helps the individual. And so what that means is we have, well, at W D I, we have eighty-three different funding streams, eighty-three different programs that we do. And so making sure that folks are co-enrolled into a, you know, a number of different opportunities so that they can get support services, so that they can get training. Um, just one example for this project, we did a lot of co-enrollment into a grant with MINDOT, um, another grant, um, to provide additional support services. Um, and, uh, we had a lot of training dollars that came out of some of those other grants. So it's not just one funding stream that supports this work, and I think that's just really important to look at, um, breeding funding streams to make it happen. And then kind of a next step, just to, just as an FYI, I thought it'd be interesting, but there's a lot of talk, um, and a lot of programs across the country that are moving towards this guaranteed basic income, uh, model. And we, that is not something that we've adopted at W D I yet, partly because we don't have the funding. Um, but it's something interesting to look at, you know, how do we make sure that people have the income that they need to be able to participate in training? Cause what we know is that somebody can't, they, they can't afford to quit their job to attend a training. And so how do we make sure that, I mean, yes, you can, you know, provide flexible training hours or evening or weekend kind of trainings, but somebody needs to have that guaranteed income. And so that's, that's something that we're looking at as a model, um, for Southeast Minnesota. But again, the funding doesn't currently support that model right now. Okay, so what's the future? Um, our trades programming at W D I has continued to evolve. We sort of started out with these very, um, short-term, union-based training opportunities that were funded through a variety of grants. They were very expensive, sometimes about ten thousand dollars per person to provide, you know, one laborer's training and, and get somebody. And we call it pre-apprenticeship training. So really getting somebody involved in the apprenticeship program and getting them on their way, um, to success in, in the, in those training, or, or those employment opportunities, excuse me. Um, that's sort of evolved to a partnership that we now have with R C T C to also continue to expand our education offerings. So somebody can, you know, either go the union route or they can go, um, and get college credit through a training program. And then we are also, you can go to the next slide. We're also, um, offering a, a wide range of training options. So, you know, uni- union versus non-union, also credit-based, non-credit-based, and short-term versus long-term. And so we've really been able, through this project, to really open up this menu of services and really open up the menu of training options available to people. And really employment opportunities. I mean, as you all know, um, those tra- those employment opportunities are very different. And so we want to make sure that the training, the supports, and the employment opportunity that we give somebody is the right fit for that person. And we've been able to do that with this project. Um, we now have a very strong partnership with the Building Strong Communities. And then what we've also been able to do is tie this project in with what we're doing with Equity and Built Environment Project. And for you, for those of you that don't know about that, um, that's, uh, hand in hand with the Bloomberg project that we've been involved with, with the city. And we received a grant through, through that project to build this equity in the built environment. Um, so we've been able to just pair these together now and, and, and we're really building something comprehensive that's going to be called Bridges to the Built Environment. And we're very proud of, um, that combination and that partnership. Next slide.
So why does the Building Strong Communities program, I'm not familiar with that one?
Yeah, so it's a project, um, it's a metro-based program, but they've expanded now to Southeast Minnesota. And what they're able to do is do a ton of marketing and outreach to get kids, um, so pre-high school or in high school and just post-high school, um, involved in the trades careers. And so they've kind of taken on a lot of our kind of marketing and outreach efforts that we, you know, didn't have necessarily funding for. And then they've been able to partner with our training programs to get kids, basically get kids involved. And we haven't really done a lot, um, with, you know, under eighteen up until that point, so we're very excited about that partnership. So like I said, we're evolving into this, what we're calling the Bridges to the Built Environment. So this is, we're gonna be, well, we are right now, building a marketing and awareness campaign. We're partnering with those folks listed there, um, including the Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge. And then this matches our branding. So we already have the Bridges to Healthcare Project, Bridges to Public Sector, Bridges, et cetera, et cetera. And now we're very proud to be soon announcing our Bridges to the Built Environment, um, pathway for folks in Southeast Minnesota. And I just want to stress that this project was absolutely instrumental in building that foundation for the programming. And if we weren't, you know, if we would have had this project, we probably wouldn't be as far as we are in building that, um, new additional pathway for all the folks in Southeast Minnesota. So a huge thank you to, um, Homestead County for this partnership. And with that, I will pause and just see if there's any questions before I hand it over to Kyle. Questions, members? All right.
Uh, Madam Chair, just, just. Do we interact at all, yeah, into the Department of Labor's, uh, so-called dual-trading pipeline program?
Rural training.
And maybe you don't know what it is, you know, it's a, it's a, it's like earn when you, earn when you work. It's kind of an apprenticeship thing. Do, do we, do we inter- interact at all with that as we're working with employers?
I am not, I, I'm not involved in that, no. Should be. Something to explore for sure.
It's, it's something that we came back from Germany a few years ago and implemented within Department of Labor. It's, it's the dual-training thing, the, kind of the apprenticeship thing.
Oh, okay. Well, at the state level, we're involved with some of the dual-training opportunities, but not D O L necessarily. Commissioner, thanks for the question, but I'll check into that.
Commissioner Ty.
And it's, and that last bullet point where the average wage is eighteen seventy-three, the increase is from basically twelve dollars and two cents, when was the twelve dollars and two cents?
This is next for M F I B, but.
Okay.
I can probably still answer that. So the question is.
What, well, when was that? It'll increase to six seventy-one. Is that from year to year or is that from decade to decade?
Year to year, yes.
So last year, we're, the average, this last year was eighteen seventy-three, the previous year was twelve dollars and two cents, average?
So the, um, sorry, I didn't have the, the previous year's, uh, info pulled up.
Well, that's, it is year to year, so that must be, yeah.
So it's, um, we're looking at the individuals who enter into the M F I B program. Uh, we analyze when they enter the program. Not all of them are unemployed, so some of them do come to us with employment, usually not enough to.
You might step up closer to the mic.
Sorry. So individuals that enter into the M F I B program, not all of them are wholly unemployed when they join us. Some are at employment levels that cannot sustain their family. So what we do with that particular report is we compare, um, the employment entrance with employment when they leave. And on average, they had an increase of six seventy-one per hour for the people that, um, exited our program in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so that makes, that makes sense, man. I was picturing it that it was eighteen seventy-three for your graduates in twenty twenty-three and previous year.
Oh. Oh, no, sorry, that's, that's right, throw me off, so.
That's entering the program to leaving the program. That's a big change, okay.
Yeah, well, most people.
I dropped that question before you even had a chance to present, so I apologize.
No, well, it's a good question. I see how it came up that way. So sorry for my confusion at the beginning. I'm Kyle Mullin. I'm the new, uh, Adult Services Director. So I see a number of our programs that we offer over the region, including Minnesota Family Investment, uh, Program, M F I B. And in there, uh, families who are receiving public assistance have somebody who's designated to engage with employment support services as a part of maintaining their public assistance. And out here in Homestead County, um, of course, the most populous county that we serve, we have some pretty impressive numbers that come about as a very close collaboration with the, the Financial Workers and Department of Human Services. So over twenty twenty-three, we served a total of nine hundred and forty-seven individuals. That doesn't count their full families, so. Um, usually be one or two people in the family identified, and they have dependents, uh, past that. So the impact echoes a little bit further than that. Uh, over the course of twenty twenty-three, six hundred and sixty-six new individuals joined in the program. Um, and they can exit for a variety of reasons, but those exited with employment, their average wage, um, was eighteen seventy-three. It can vary plenty. And for those that came to us with, uh, some degree of income beforehand, the average increase was roughly six seventy-one an hour. So, uh, next slide. And then thank you for that clarification there. Um, then there's also divisionary or diversionary work program. And these are for individuals that are feeling like they probably just need a few months of assistance, about four months. They go through a diversionary work program before going on into the full M F I B, which can run for up to sixty months. So these are usually individuals where they can get into their employment a little bit quickly. So that's why we see two hundred and twenty-four were served, uh, one hundred and eighty-nine were enrolled, and a hundred and seven already, uh, exited to employment. Um, at an average wage of eighteen sixty-three, or eighteen sixty an hour, sorry. With an, uh, for those who came to us with employment, uh, increase of roughly three ninety-nine an hour. So they're usually, um, they're doing fairly well, and their identifies will be a quick turnaround. That's why there's a little bit less of an increase in their average ref, uh, wage, yes.
I'm gonna ask you, uh, this is your field, and not all of us understand the difference between the diversion program and the M F I B program. Can you just, uh, talk about how, how that works? I mean, we, we would have someone who would apply for assistance through the county. They would refer to you. Just walk us through the process.
Certainly. So initially, somebody would reach out to the county, um, indicating, I need some type of assistance. The employment I have isn't enough to, to pay the bills and, and feed my family, or I just lost my job, and I'm going to need help finding the next one. Um, so they would go to the county, and the county would assess their needs. And if they got, uh, food assistance, housing assistance, cash assistance, unless they had a special medical exception, like a, a significant health concern or something else that would make them ineligible to search for employment supports, then they refer them, uh, the county staff refer them directly to W D I. We go through an enrollment, we confirm, uh, we get them enrolled in the state system for this. Plus, we check for those, uh, eighty-some other programs that, that Ginny mentioned. We always try to co-enroll whenever we can to maximize the supports. And then they would have monthly at minimum contact with our career planners, counseling them through everything from, um, you know, resume development and, uh, interviewing, as well as helping them with training plans. And we even can assist with a few of those extra bills that the, the standard cash assistance can't help with. Now, the diversionary work program, um, they usually start in that. If they have never used M F I B supports before, the stake is in sixty months over their lifetime, or so long as they have, uh, dependents, uh, age eighteen or younger. So if, um, they haven't used M F I B before, they get entered first into diversionary work program that runs about four months. Here's a chance, we just need a quick boost, a quick turnaround, and you can get, uh, placed into employment. And we do see that tends to work pretty well. Um, that is, and then if they need time past that four months, and they move into the full M F I B. Um, families that before have used M F I B and then gone off or had something happening to go back in, they, they may go straight into the, the M F I B, cause they'd already used their four months. Um, diversionary work program, I will go ahead and toss out, it is slated to actually be, uh, retired in, uh, I think, twenty twenty-five. And the state tried it out to see if it would offer extra value, but then it's just the four, first four months of, of M F I B. And they feel merging them all under the one soon will, will provide the same level of supports. Thank you. Um, next slide. So, um, through this, just want to go ahead and run through some of the demographics. Of course, you'll see, uh, a large number of the folks that we support are female. And then when we look at the, um, the racial demographics there, it shows that through this program, a number of others, our supports actually, um, help a lot of the, the, uh, BIPOC and disadvantaged community. Um, even a bit more than the, the ratios for the county. Uh, we also have supports for individuals with a disability. And eleven percent of those we served over this last year were experiencing homelessness of some sort. And the program supports also assists those who are just as involved and just trying to get a, a leg up to get on the right path again. So one of the new things I'm excited to share about, um, through a collaboration with the county, um, we have a survey that's running now for the recipients, and it just, we got our first data poll from that recently. Uh, this is for, uh, participants with W D I in general, their responses, um, with satisfaction regarding they listen to me, treat me with respect, answer my questions, respond quickly, and easier to contact them. I, I know the colors there are, are a little bit, uh, backwards, I think, but the darker orange is, uh, the always, and you'll see our results for satisfaction are, are up there in the, uh, the nineties for all of those metrics from the first data poll. We're pretty excited about that. Uh, next slide. Now, this particular one is from the same survey, but it covers, uh, both W D I and, uh, the county. Just kind of talking about the experience that the people on the M F I B program go through. If you look at things where they've helped, uh, connecting family to community resources, it's a big part of this program, is pulling in housing assistance and other programs, food assistance, so it's not all just on the, the county. And then, uh, paying the bills is a big one right there. It's the gray bar. Um, those things, we were talking about the universal basic income, this is part of the way there in helping them address those, those challenges. They still need to pay for the, the lights and the groceries, even as they're job hunting. And then one of the things I personally thought was a little bit powerful, but I'm a softie. Um, I appreciate how high the next one was, listening to concerns. Um, the counseling part of career counseling, um, sometimes gets more emphasized, uh, on other days because people are grappling with a lot in life, not just from our programs, but from elsewhere. And, uh, those career planners and counselors we have, uh, make a big difference in just helping people get through the stress of a transition like that. So that is all stuff I had there, other than this is achieved through a huge, uh, collaboration with the, the county offices here. We appreciate that support and being able to help over a thousand people and then their, their families. The ripple effect is big. Thank you for helping us achieve that.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, Commissioner. So what, what suggestions do you have for the county that we could make the collaboration better? Or that we could improve the work environment or improve the employment for the, these folks that are looking for a job?
Um, there's a few different, it's a big question, but there's a lot of different answers to, to filter through. Um, I would actually, um, suggest with some of the county financial workers, you have an amazing team here, absolutely, and they're a big part of the process. Um, but they are a little understaffed and struggling with moving through the cases. So there are a number of individuals where they are, are then stuck with a backlog. And we have seen some folks come to us and say, well, if I have to wait until I get the approval, why should I apply? And, cause people will walk through our doors, um, for other reasons as well. So it's, the kind of workers are amazing. If you're able to do something to support them or help, uh, that particular team that is so essential with this, um, whether that be adding to their staff or assessing their workloads, that can make a big difference. Again, I want to emphasize, they're great people, they're doing what they can, but they're down a few folks, and then it has a ripple outwards impact since they are the first ones who process and refer people to get into these programs.
I have another question, that's right. So, um, do you have any programs that you work with, um, junior high, middle school, um, age groups, uh, to prepare them for careers? Working with school districts or other, um, entities, um, that are looking for employment and looking for a long-term program in order to get them into careers?
Yes, we have a whole, uh, division of our services tied to, uh, youth supports. And that is traditionally structured for ages fourteen to twenty-four, so covers a pretty wide definition of youth. But then also we partner with some of the schools for just awareness and outreach and, um, jo- uh, helping organize job fairs for ages a little bit younger than that. It was actually a conference just recently where they were starting to push that we have to be targeting folks starting at age ten. Just let them know about the options.
Right. The, the program of fourteen to eighteen, you know, that, that just deals with, they have to qualify for that services, right? That's not open to everybody?
Um, yeah, there's a variety of different youth support programs, and they do have to meet different qualifications based upon which one they go for. Uh, we are also working on building up a few programs that we use what we call, um, unrestricted funds, where then we wouldn't have to meet, uh, certain eligibility guidelines. We can make it open to everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Mr. Mull, um, I may be miswritten, uh, you've reported on the two aspects of your services that relate directly to the county's, uh, referral process with you. Do you want to give us a little bit of sense of the, the broader scope of W D I's, um, workforce initiatives for our region? So that, you know, many of us aren't on your bar, don't have a full, uh, appreciation for all that you do. Maybe just highlight a couple of the, the broader things that you, the roles you play in the region.
So we've actually got, again, when we talk about the eighty different, uh, programs, we've got some big regional ones going on right now. Uh, so both the state, uh, is rewriting their WEO Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. So one of the big, uh, workforce supporting programs, they're going over. And they're spending this year rewriting guidelines and policies to update them. And with the goal of making them more accessible. And separate from that, we are going to be working on a regional plan rewrite. So that will be a big one. We've been gathering some input on, uh, that will impact this area specifically. Um, then there's a wide variety of industry-specific deed grants. We also operate in different regions that can cover, um, everything from healthcare to, um, construction to manufacturing. So again, I, I always struggle when my brain, mind starts to drift to the, the eighty different programs and keeping it to an elevator speech there. So you might be more practiced at that.
I can add, yeah. Um, so Kyle is brand new in his role. He's the new Wanda Jensen. So for those of you that knew Wanda, she retired December thirty-first, so trying to give you a little bit of a break. Um, but anyway, so just a broader view, so Workforce Development Inc., we're part of the larger workforce system across the nation. Um, and so we have a, a, a workforce development board made up of, um, sixty percent private business, part of a network that goes all across the country under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act law, so WEO is what we call it. Um, so we're part of that broader system, and then in the state, we're also part of the broad. And then in the state, we're also part of the broader workforce system in Minnesota. There's sixteen workforce development areas, we're one of the sixteen. And so we do receive, um, direct allocation funding through, uh, federal workforce funds as well as state workforce funds. Um, and then a lot of different competitive grants, most of the state, um, workforce funding is competitive. And so we are competing against other, lots of different nonprofit organizations and other government entities. Um, so all of that said, it, you know, it, it makes this very complicated funding model. But really what we're, what we're well-known for really across the country in southeast Minnesota is our career pathways work. And so that's really, really where we focused a lot of our efforts, focused a lot of our funding streams, um, on targeted industries that are, you know, critical industry sectors in southeast Minnesota, building a pipeline of individuals, he- helping them with the support services and the career counseling, and then getting them into a training program and then ultimately an employment opportunity, providing all the supports along the way. So that's kind of just generally speaking, what we, um, what we do. We do have a, a lot of different partnerships, you know, none of this, like I said earlier, none of this can happen through WDI alone. So we're partnering, you know, every town, every county, it looks a little bit different, what our programming looks like and what our partnerships look like. Um, you know, Steel Counties, we have Steel County Works where we are funded through, um, United Way and the Chamber to provide some workforce services. Um, we have a partnership down in Houston County, that's, uh, six school districts that work together to provide youth programming and, you know, so we just have a lot of different, um, varieties of workforce programming across the ten county area. Um, but I will say that what we're, what we're really famous for, what we're, what we do really well in southeast Minnesota is that career pathway training. Is that?
Thank you. I just think it has helped that little context. Um, we have a, we have a role with you, but you're a much broader service array organization for, for us to be reminded of that is helpful. Um, are there other members have questions? All right. Thank you very much for your partnership and for being with us today. So, uh, we're, uh, I need to clarify why we pulled, uh, the grant agreement program park. And so, uh, Commissioner Ty, did you want to speak to that?
Well, I have concerns that if this moves forward without further discussion on the possibility of a, some kind of restaurant inside that building that we may never be able to get, get that inside the building. So we need to have a discussion at a board level whether that's appropriate or not. So I want to pause it while we have that discussion. Hopefully we can get some resolution and figure a path forward.
So the Graham Park Work Group will take this up, but we'll also look at how to involve the full board and the, and, uh, the consequences of what, you know, the original master plan had a, uh, for the building had a restaurant in it that would be privately operated. And the plan that was about to be submitted to the, uh, uh, for approval, did, had taken that out on a cost basis. But I think it needs to be a broader discussion of, of the consequences of that, uh, both programmatically and to the budget and to timeline. So there's a number of things that will need to be discussed and it'll be back on your agenda, uh, at our next meeting, hopefully. So that's, that's where we are with it right now. So.
Chair, can I just ask though, uh, yeah, I went through this last night. I, I didn't see any reference to any function in here at all. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with waiting, it doesn't mean that, but I, I, this is, this is a grant agreement with the state of Minnesota, MMB, and, and I, I don't know that these get that specific.
Well, we'll take it up, um, and if you can be more specific about what questions you'd like answered, then we'll be sure to make sure that we get those answered, so.
Can we have that clarified before?
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Miller, Director of Facilities and Building Operations. I'll do my best. Commissioner Senjum, you are correct. The grant agreement is pretty generic in nature. And then outside of the grant agreement, we do what's called pre-design. Uh, so we just completed a pre-design submission, what talks, which talks about program in as far as general uses spaces. But yes, I agree with you that it is not contemplated in the grant agreement. What's contemplated in there is the total budget, the timeline, and just some of the general parameters.
Commissioner.
Well, that, that was how I read it also, so thank you very much for that clarification. This really just dots all the i's, crosses the t's as far as legal agreement with the state does not finalize design elements.
That is accurate. So essentially what it does is it guarantees that we receive that eight million dollars in reimbursement from the state that the legislature appropriated in the legislative session last year. Um, so it's a formal agreement that we have to have with deed to basically set that up for us.
But it also sets the outside parameters of the full budget for the design.
Correct. So thirty million is the total budget, so twenty-two million coming from county funds, eight million coming from the state. And it also contemplates, uh, construction end date of December of twenty twenty-six.
So the staff decision to take, to keep within budget was to take the, the restaurant provision out.
Correct. Yep. And schedule.
And the schedule.
Yep.
So if we move forward with this grant, could we still have that separate argument whether we want to supplement it with a, with a restaurant or not?
Yes, I think so, uh, because I don't think that it would impact the grant agreement to Commissioner Senjum's point, especially if it's a hundred percent locally funded.
Well, then maybe we should.
In the, in the brief conversation you and I were able to have this morning, I had a different understanding. My understanding was that you would, by adjusting the budget, you would have to reapply for the grant agreement to the feds, that we can't adjust the budget for this project and keep the grant agreement as you're currently planning to submit it.
Yep. So I'd say that is an unknown. So my understanding is if we move forward with the grant agreement the way it's written, we can proceed, proceed as pre-designed was submitted. If we decide to, let's say, do an addition to the building that's attached and it's completely funded separately, operated separately, there might be some gray area there. So again, we're, we're treading in the water that I don't know a hundred percent on how deed views that as far as the agreement.
So if we delay the grant agreement application for, till our next meeting, does, will that create a significant, um, problem? Uh, what's your advice?
So short answer is no, it won't create a significant problem. Uh, basically, any delay at this point is adding on to the end date of construction. So it would essentially, in nature, be a two-week delay. So if we bring this back on February twentieth, we could, uh, potentially lose two weeks in the construction schedule. Um, the one thing we're hoping to accomplish, accomplish is have the grant agreement in place before we sign a contract with a design firm. And the goal was to award that in late February and early March.
And I think there's probably some questions about that process too.
Sure.
So, uh, we have pulled it from the, the consent agenda. Um, and I guess we have the option of, of moving it back onto the agenda for a decision today. Uh, because now we've had some discussion. Uh, and I'm looking to, it looks like, uh, Ms. Walsh wishes to speak.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I believe you're gonna need to make a decision about what you want to do with it still. You can't just pull it off and then move on. So you either can vote on it, you could table it, I think would be the appropriate Robert's Rules of Order. Um, if you want it to come back, you could table it and give us time certain in two weeks for it to come back. Uh, but you've got to take some action.
Right. And I cannot make a motion, so what's the, what's the, uh?
I just want some assurance that if, if we voted on it today, you can assure that we can make changes. It's a, it's a little gray is what I'm hearing.
It's gray. Um, you know, I don't know with a hundred percent certainty that deed would frown on an addition like that. Um, this is kind of uncharted territory, so I'm not a hundred percent certain.
All right, then I'll make a motion to table it until our next meeting in February.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. All those in favor, any discussion? All right, keep forgetting about discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose same sign. Motion prevents. So, uh, we're to board and committee, uh, reports. And I'm looking down to the left side of the diastate.
I'll start. Yesterday morning, uh, I had the opportunity as well as, um, some of our commissioner colleagues here and some, uh, city and county staff to attend a traveling exhibit of the history of African-American people and families in Rochester. And it was a fantastic event. It was standing room only. Uh, uh, attendees were spanning, um, excuse me, all generations, speakers as well. Uh, as someone who grew up in, in Rochester, it was really a soul-inspiring event. Uh, I don't know where the exhibit will land next, um, but it will be traveling throughout the area. And I, I wanted to, um, uh, just say a, a few words um, about how important an, an event like that is. And I also, I, I've gotten a few questions about, uh, as, as some of you recall, I was, uh, appointed to the Cannabis Advisory Council. And I've been asked if we've met yet or any updates yet. And I, I did have a chance to attend the Office of Cannabis Management Implementation, Implementation Update webinar. And that was open to the public. Uh, so anyone curious about, uh, Office of Cannabis Management could, could tune into that webinar. They answered, uh, uh, a, a few questions about their status, which is mostly the Office of Cannabis Management continues to, uh, seek its executive director, so that's still forming. The, uh, the, uh, Cannabis Advisory Council is nearly fully formed. And we expect to have our first meeting in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. So there's your update.
Thank you. Commissioner Rasmussen?
No report today.
Mr. Ty.
Um, at the most recent city council meeting, Rochester City Council meeting, they voted to establish a historic district in Rochester. And, and then pigtailing on that, that was presented to the DMC board last week. And the DMC, C board instructed staff to move forward with plans on how to help subsidize those, that district so the owners of those buildings can keep those buildings viable moving forward, which I supported, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wright?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Mueller?
Actually, I have some sort of a report. Um, I went, uh, Saturday down to Winona for, uh, uh, hearing for the legislature on EMS. Um, and the, uh, lack of funding that they're having, um, also with Medicare reimbursement, which is very low. Um, and the lack of volunteers, um, the, the rural areas are struggling. St. Charles lost their certification from, uh, lack of staff. Um, there are only two ambulance services in Olmsted County, one is Yoda and the other is Mail. Um, uh, where am I at here? It went, the, the legislature that was down doing this hearing, uh, basically said, well, there isn't really much money available and the EMS is not considered essential services through the state.
Yeah, only if you don't have a heart attack.
Right. So this is just some information to throw out there. And the legislature, uh, that, uh, task force is traveling around the state, so that's about all I have.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. That, that's a lot to think about and I would say the legislature is, uh, uh, if they're not careful, they're gonna own this because it's, uh, these, these volunteers are precious all the way across our state and, uh, they need support and, uh, not neglect. But that aside, I had a chance last week, uh, and perhaps others have done this, but I met, uh, I met with the red team. And, uh, and that was, that was pretty enlightening. So what is the red team? I, I'm not sure I know altogether what they do, but, but the conversation was about child protection and how they do it. And, and my motivation was how do I, how do I walk in the shoes of some of these people in a, in a different way than we might walk as they come to, to our room and, and, and talk about their program? But how do I get into their program, better understand what they're doing? But, uh, an amazing group of people that, that face every day hard decisions about child custody, child neglect, this, things that I think most people in, in our county probably maybe to some great extent don't even know exists. But there's, there's a, there's an underworld there that does exist and it's, uh, it's, it's painful to listen to, but it's, but it's heartwarming to see the dedication and commitment of these people and, and how they take on this very, very difficult and emotionally, I think, taxing job. And, uh, they just do a wonderful job. I also met with family service folks as well, so a, a really good experience and, uh, helped me better understand the, the complexity of the world that some of our staff work in.
Thank you. Uh, I would just note that several of us attended the Mike Manuel meeting in, uh, Winona last week. And, uh, one of the topics that was discussed was the mental health commitments, which we also heard in a briefing on from our own staff this morning, uh, in the Health and Human Services Committee. And it is clear that, um, mental health services are at a crisis stage as well as emergency medical services. And we have at least one of our members who is strongly advocating that we become much more active in, uh, in lobbying the legislature and others about the need for improved treatment beds, availability of treatment beds across the state of Minnesota, which is consistent with what the Attorney, County Attorneys Association and others are also saying. So that is, uh, um, just sort of call that out. Many who yesterday were also attended the, um, uh, Southeast Minnesota Together Report on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that's been developed, by a series of partners for our region. And heard from the Region Nine, uh, Executive Director, Regional Development Authority Executive Director. It appears that there's two places in the state that do not have a regional development organization. South, our Region Ten, and then a region up, uh, that, that's around the St. Cloud area. The St. Cloud area is working to create a regional development organization of some sort. It would appear that that would then increase the, the expectation that there be some conversation happening in our region. And so there will be, um, there will be some other, uh, work happening in the, in over the next year to look at. Do we need some sort of regional development organization? I just observed that our, 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 uh, Physical Development Committee heard about exhibition this morning. Um, we, I was approached at yesterday's meeting by another group that wanted to come in to talk to us about a different approach to economic development. We had proposals into our budget last year from Ready to increase our funding into economic development. And I'm hoping that, um, we are really going to take a deeper dive into what is the county's role uh, around economic development, what do we envision it being? Uh, what, where, where would we focus if we're going to focus? Um, how would we budget for that? How would we partner for that? I think there's a whole, um, arena to be explored there. And, and the outside groups are asking for, uh, more attention to this than, than, um, we have given in the past. So I think that that's, you know, just call that out. Um, for those of you who are interested that, um, the group yesterday had a number of articles that are available online if you want to read about other approaches to do, um, regional development organizations. So that would be my report for the day. So I'd like to close with a quote. Now, this is, uh, African-American History Month is, uh, is called out for their, for the traveling display, which you can go over to the City Hall Rotunda. It is, uh, it is on display right now, I think, for the rest of the month. So I thought, given the history, I chose two quotes from Nelson Mandela. The first one is, "There's nothing like returning to a place that remains unchanged to find out the ways you yourself have altered." And the other one is, "A good head and a good heart are always a formidable combination." So to all of you having a good head and a good heart, let's have a good month together. And, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, we adjourned the meeting, all in favor, so we.